I do.
That's right.
Can I get yourself settled?
I know.
Again, right? All right. I know. All right. Are we good? Good evening. The Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education regular meeting for Monday, August 12, 2019, will come to order. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Eric Brown.
Here.
Linda Cohen.
Here.
Andrea Keen.
Here.
Benita Lucky.
Here.
Cheryl Polzin.
Here.
Chris McCullough, here.
Sarah Johansson.
Here.
And Dr. Anderson.
Here.
All right. Fantastic. We are all here. And so now, we need an agenda. So, the first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of consent agenda items unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda item and addressed. The consent agenda items are listed in the board packet, and the recommended action is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda items. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
All right. It's been moved in seconded, and I think we have a roll call vote.
We do. Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes.
Benita Lucky.
Yes.
Chris McCullough, yes. Cheryl Polzin.
Yes.
Eric Brown.
Yes.
And Chair Johansson.
Yes.
All right. And that passes. Now, we have an agenda. And the first item on our agenda are reports from organizations. As school is not in session and our students are around, we will look forward to meeting our new student council representative and hearing from him in September. And so, that moves us on to recognitions, and I think we have one. Dr. Anderson.
Madam Chair and members of the board, we do have just one recognition tonight, and given that this person is not in attendance tonight, I think I'll just remain right here rather than go to the podium. But, we would like to recognize Becky Nelson, our secretary at the Welcome Center, who had served in that role for seven years, who since our last meeting had announced her intent to retire. So, we thank Becky for her service to the school district and all of the contributions that she made. And it's our custom to always give a round of applause, so she can enjoy that on television.
Thank you so much. And moving on to a couple of policies in your agenda this evening. Dr. Johnson or Dr. Anderson?
I'll take the lead on this one. Madam Chair and members of the board, we have a number of policies for your review that are in the board packet this evening. They're kind of across a number of different divisions or entities within the school district. And as the board is aware, and the community may or may not be aware, we have a policy committee that meets typically monthly, sometimes more frequently, or periodically missing a month. But, we do have a lot of discussion about our board policies at our committees before they come before the board. And we have a number in the packet tonight. I'll just read the names of the policies for your awareness. Policy 901 Communications and Public Relations Program, 907 Gifts from the Public, 908 Fundraising, 909 Visitors, 910 Distribution and Posting of Promotional Literature, 911 Advertising, 912 Public Complaints, 914 Relations with Community Organizations, 915 Relations with Religious Organizations, 916 Relations with Political Organizations, 917 Relations with Governmental Authorities, 918 Political Election Campaign Materials, 919 Community Education, and 920 Use of School District Facilities and Equipment. So, those are board policies that are included tonight in the board packet. And I would turn it over to our board chair for recommended action.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Board colleagues, the recommended action is to approve the policies as listed in your packet and just in a form mentioned by Dr. Anderson. Is there a motion to that effect?
Madam Chair, I so move, and I move that we waive the reading as well as the second reading and move them all for final approval this evening.
Second. All right. It's been moved in seconded. Is there any discussion? Andrea.
Just to reiterate what Dr. Anderson said as Chair of the Policy Committee, I just want to point out that it's kind of a hefty list of policies this month, and it's quite a bit of work that we do in our committees to make sure that they're all updated and that we are meeting the requirements of any new statutes. And so, I want to thank the Policy Committee. It's Chris McCullough, Sarah Johansson, and me. And then, Dr. Anderson also serves, and we get a lot of support from the whole administrative team, including Jim and Stacy and Jill. And Ashley Winter does a majority of the work on the edits. So, thank you so much for all your work. I just want everyone to know that we kind of quickly do approve these at this meeting, but there's a lot of work that goes into looking over each policy with a fine-tooth comb. So, thanks to everyone for your work on that.
Thank you. I will just add that in this list, you'll see there's lots of communication and some community ed stuff. So, I will also add Amy Parnell and Jennifer Ebert, who are Communications and Engagement Director and Community Education Director, who also had a lot to do with these policies.
Yes.
All right. There's a motion on the table for, I will just, for the record, list, not name them all, but policies 901, 907, 908, 909, 910, 911, 912, 914, 915, 916, 917, 918, 919, and 920. All in favor of approving those policies for first and second reading, and so therefore moving them forward for final approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Abstentions. Motion carries. All right. It's always good to move into the new year. And now, I think we move over to a number of business and finance items, right? Hello, Mr. Westrom.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Yes, we have eight items before you this evening, but I did want to give you a quick update on some of the construction projects that are occurring in the district, because some of those projects are highly visible and people in the viewing audience may have questions. You're probably aware that we've done some significant renovations to Central Middle School, and if you were to drive by Central Middle School, it may appear that it may be questionable whether or not we'll be able to open in time for students when they arrive. So, I did include a document at each of your places where you're seated, and did want to let you know that much of the work inside the building is on schedule. And I also gave you the timelines on where various parts of the building will be online. So, you can see that we have dates of August 16th for a portion of the building, August 19th, which will be over the weekend. We also have a deadline of August 22nd for another portion, the Media Center and the portion underneath the Media Center. And then finally, by Sunday, August 25th. Just a couple remarks that I'd like to make. You're probably aware that we try to do our construction, probably three or four months' worth of work in a 10-week period. And our construction partners assist us with that with the scheduling, and currently, we are working nights and weekends on a number of these projects. So, Central Middle School, it's highly likely will open on time unless we have any unexpected delays. I may mention that if people do notice the parking lot, we're working with our utilities to relocate the utilities, and so that's one of the reasons why that hasn't moved as rapidly as the general population may anticipate. But, once that's installed, and I believe that was started today, we'll be able to get the blacktop down fairly rapidly. Couple other things about Central Middle School. In our original plan, as I mentioned, we have about 10 weeks to do quite a bit of construction. So, the auditorium is anticipated to be completed in early fall. So, that wasn't anticipated to be completed in time for the students to arrive. The Media Center will be completed, but we will probably not have students in the Media Center the first week. We would want the media specialists and staff to prepare the Media Center so that it's acceptable and exciting to use for our students. And then, the turf field and athletic fields are also scheduled to come on slightly after the school year begins. One additional item is we will put down the first coating of pavement on the parking lots, and then we'll revisit that probably over MEA, so that we're prepared for winter when that time arrives. So, at Central Middle School.
Okay.
Also, East Middle School is moving ahead as we anticipated. I will just mention that the addition to East Middle School, which will allow us to fully incorporate a auditorium at East Middle School, will be completed later in the fall as well. But, we have put in place the appropriate steps and wayfinding to make sure that students aren't impacted by some of the construction that will occur outside the building. So, those are the two biggest projects. And then, this evening, you'll notice that we have a number of items that we're going to proceed and ask the board to approve related to an addition at Oakwood, which will be coming up shortly next, this Thursday, actually, August 15th. We've also put out bids for an addition to Oakwood, and we anticipate getting those bids results on August 15th, this Thursday, and then having the board approve those at a special board work session on August 26th. So, those are a couple of the items that I wanted to just start out with, and now we can go to the agenda unless anybody has any questions or comments.
No. Thank you so much for those construction updates. I got a number of questions at Back to Business Days today, and they said, "We're all coming back to business. Will Central be coming back to business?" So, that is good to know. And I said, "Yes, that's all I hear," but it's great to have these dates and things that we can just give a second set of approvals. So, thank you for that.
Yes. Okay. Well, the items that we have before you, the first item is our monthly financial reports. And as you're aware, our fiscal year ends on June 30th, and so, we actually do not prepare any reports until we complete the audit. I would like to point out that there's an investment summary in the packet, and it shows the investments that are held by the district. No school board action is required at this time, and our business office has been very busy working on completing the closeout of the books. And so, we'll have auditors coming in September. And at this point, our enrollment looks to be coming in where we anticipated for last year, and our finances appear to be in order as well. So, I do not believe that we'll see any surprises. So, with that, I do appreciate the fact that the Finance Committee of the school board, made up of three members, including the Treasurer, meet with me on a monthly basis, and we do a deep dive into the financial matters of the school district. And entire school board and community can have a high level of confidence that our finances are in order.
Thank you.
Yes. So, no board action is required. Any questions or?
Any questions or comments? No? Okay.
Okay. The next three items are related to the November school board election that's coming up. So, I'll just go through each of these, and we'll ask the board to approve the resolutions. So, the first is a resolution relating to the establishment of absentee voting hours and location. So, because the school district will be conducting an election on November 5th, voters may vote at designating polling places on Election Day, November 5th, 2019, or may vote early via absentee ballot. Absentee or early voting can be performed by mail or in person, and voters wishing to vote early by mail can do so by contacting the Minnesota Secretary of State Office. Voters wishing to vote early in person can vote at the District Administrative Building, located at 210 County Road 101 North in Wayzata, Minnesota. And once again, those voters residing within the city of Minnetoka will follow the hours and locations as determined by the city of Minnetoka. So, this first resolution, the recommended action is before you.
Okay. All right. So, thank you, Mr. Westrom. The recommended action is to adopt, as presented, the resolution relating to the establishment of absentee voting hours and locations. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved. Did I ask that we waive the reading of the resolution?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay. Hearing none.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
All right. Andrea Keen.
Yes.
Benita Lucky.
Yes.
Chris McCullough, yes.
Cheryl Polzin.
Yes.
Eric Brown.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
And Chair Johansson.
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our second item related to the general election on November 5th is a resolution related to the appointment of election judges. The school board is required to officially appoint qualified individuals to serve as election judges for the school district elections. Attached is the appropriate resolution related to the appointment of election judges for the general election on November 5th, 2019. The resolution also establishes payment amount for judges. Hence, the recommended action is before you.
All right. Thank you so much. Board colleagues, the recommended action is to adopt, as presented, the resolution relating to the appointment of election judges for the general election on November 5th, 2019. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And would the maker of the motion and the secondar ask that we waive the reading of the resolution?
Yes.
All right. Okay. So, it's been moved in seconded with a waive of the reading of the resolution. Any discussion? No? Okay. It's another roll call vote.
All right. Benita Lucky.
Yes.
Chris McCullough, yes. Cheryl Polzin.
Yes.
Eric Brown.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes.
And Chair Johansson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right.
Thank you. The next resolution is appointing absentee ballot board election judges for the November 5th, 2019 general election. So, this resolution is effectively repeating the last resolution, except this will be for absentee ballot board elections. So, the resolution is before you, and the recommended action?
All right. Once again, the recommended action is to adopt, as presented, the resolution in appointing the absentee ballot board election judges for the general election on November 5th, 2019. Is there a motion to that effect?
I so move and ask that we please waive the reading of the resolution. Second.
All right. It's been moved in seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, Ms. Polzin.
I just would like to thank anyone who's serving in the capacity of an election judge. We really need them every election, so thanks to all of those who are willing to serve in that capacity.
All right. Yes. That is, all right. Thanks so much. Okay. Mr. McCullough.
All vote. Chris McCullough, yes. Cheryl Polzin.
Yes.
Eric Brown.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes.
Benita Lucky.
Yes.
And Chair Johansson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Lots of resolutions.
Yes, and there's a few more, but now, we're going to head to construction-related resolutions.
All right.
So, just wanted to make a few introductory remarks. You're probably aware that the school district has spent a great amount of time examining its facilities, and we want to be as prudent as possible with taxpayer dollars and make sure that we can serve our students, our growing student population, as effectively as possible. So, during that planning process, we determined that we would like to add an addition to the Oakwood Elementary School. Part of that will be for the early learning school and for earliest learners, our zero to five-year-old population. And another portion will be for the K through 5th grade population served throughout the district as well. This addition will also include a new gymnasium, and it will also include renovating certain core spaces so that we can effectively service our students throughout the community. So, in order to do that, we need to have the board authorize myself and the administration to seek the financing sources. And we have spent a great deal of time with our Citizens Finance Advisory Council, talking about the tools that are unique to school districts that will allow us to do this. And once again, I do want to reiterate that we currently are using operating lease levy or operating leases to lease space that's not owned by the district, and the benefit of adding on to one of our own facilities is that we can use a capital lease financing tool. And at the end of the lease term, the district will actually retain ownership of those facilities. So, careful consideration has been given, and now, I will ask the board to give consideration to beginning the financing for these. So, the first item, as a part of the financing of the Oakwood addition, the district administration recommends the use of the tax abatement financing tool available to Minnesota school districts. As a part of the process, a public hearing must be held pursuant to Minnesota statutes to consider granting an abatement of certain property taxes levied against a net tax capacity imposed by the school district. For taxes payable in 2020 through 2034, proceeds will be used for parking lot construction and renovation. The district will issue $8 million in abatement bonds with a term of 15 years. The tax impact on the average valued home with an assessed value of $400,000 would be $18 a year or $1.50 a month. The current interest rate environment is favorable, and the administration recommends approval of the attached resolution. And I would just also mention that the Finance Committee of the board met this morning, and we did talk about with the increased assessed valuation and construction that's going on in the district, we are identifying the tax impact, kind of the worst-case scenario. We think it's highly likely that there will be minimal to no tax impact with the issuance of the abatement bonds. So, the recommended action is before you, simply to call a hearing next month at 6, or not next month, well, yeah, next month, September 9th at 6:45 PM, to allow the public to ask any questions they may have. So, the recommended action is before you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Westrom. The recommended action is to approve the resolution calling for a public hearing at 6:45 PM on September 9th, 2019 pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 469.1813 subdivision 5 to consider granting an abatement of certain property taxes levied against the next net tax capacity imposed by independent school district number 284 and others, the proposed property tax abatement for taxes payable in 2020 through 2034, as detailed in the board packet and explained by Mr. Westrom. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Would the maker of the motion like to?
Oh, and yes, I think we should waive the reading of the resolution, if we would, please.
Second. All right. It's been moved in seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'll just make a quick comment. I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the administration sort of looking over all of the possible tools that we have to best finance the project to enlarge Oakwood. And I think, it's my understanding that this tool has been available to us, and many school districts do use it, but we haven't in the past. And when you look over the whole project in how we're going to finance it, you arrived at a solution that is the best for our district. So, I appreciate you exploring all those options and landing on the best possible scenario for us. So, I appreciate that. And I also appreciate the fact that we're having the public hearing, so if there's any questions, that we'll be able to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I clarify? This is the, September 9th is the date of our next board meeting. So, will that public hearing be held here?
Yes. The public hearing will be held here at 6:45 PM.
Okay.
For the general public to come and comment if they would like.
Okay. So, it'll be in advance of our school board meeting here at the Wayzata City Hall, for anyone who's watching. Okay. Other discussion? Other questions? No? It's a roll call vote.
All right. Cheryl Polzin.
Yes.
Eric Brown.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes.
Benita Lucky.
Yes.
Chris McCullough, yes. And Chair Johansson.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes.
All right.
Thank you. The next item is informational. It gives the Certificates of Participation pre-sale report. So, it basically is just for information, and I think this school board is getting really adept at financing additions throughout the district. You probably are aware that we've already added additions to Sunset Hill, Oakwood, and Greenwood, as well as Metal Ridge. And then, of course, we built Northwoods with the addition already intact, because we knew the enrollment continued to grow. But, as a part of the financing of the Oakwood addition, the district administration recommends the use of the Certificates of Participation financing tool available to Minnesota school districts. We have used this tool in the past. We call these COPS, or Certificates of Participation. The term is 19 years, 8 months, and we'll use existing lease levy authority. So, there will be minimal to no increase on individual taxpayers in the district. The current interest rate environment remains favorable, and the administration recommends moving forward with the issuance of Certificates of Participation at the September 9th, 2019 regular school board meeting. I'll just make one additional comment, which I had shared a little bit earlier this evening. We go out for bid on August 15th, and we anticipate that the bids will come in favorable, primarily due to the fact that construction will occur other than during that 10-month window that every school district in the state of Minnesota is attempting to take care of their construction contracts. So, we're anticipating that the amount will not exceed $17 million as presented in your packet. So, the recommended action is before you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Westrom. The recommended action is to direct the superintendent to have the administration proceed with the issuance of Certificates of Participation and call for the sale at the September 9th, 2019 regular school board meeting. Is there a motion to that effect?
I so move and request that we waive the reading.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right. There's a number of detailed documents in the board packet as well that we all reviewed. Okay. It's a roll call vote.
All right. Eric Brown.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes.
Benita Lucky.
Yes.
Chris McCullough, yes. Cheryl Polzin.
Yes.
And Chair Johansson.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes.
Hey, Madam Chair, members of the board. Now, we're switching to another area. We're switching to finance and business. I did want to just thank my colleagues, the executive directors, constantly monitor the enrollment in the school district, and we're looking at our finance, financial picture as well as our curriculum picture. And what's very interesting is, you're aware that the enrollment continues to grow in the district. It's kind of interesting that when we opened up Metal Ridge, that building ended up several hundred students over the original projection. As of August 2nd, Northwoods is already 100 students over projection as well. So, it's very rare that we come to the board prior to September 1st and ask for additional staff, but at this point, the enrollment that actually has already registered to be in, attending the school district this fall is in place. You're probably aware that we had our kindergarten bus driver safety, and many students arrived there as well. So, what I'll do is I'll just share, once again, the school board approved the 2019-20 budget on June 10th, and that budget and staffing was based on enrollment projections from our October 1st, 2018 child count, which we've consistently done in the past. And then, we update that with the December 1st, 2018 child count, including our census on our zero to five populations. Kindergarten is always a little more difficult to project, but our kindergarten is already over projection as well. So, you're probably aware that the school board reviewed the results of a comprehensive demographic and enrollment projection report, prepared by Hazel Ranhart at the June 24th prepared by Hazel Reinhardt at the June 24th school board work session. And then once again, you approved it at the July 8th, 2019 school board meeting. The results indicated that student enrollment continues to remain robust and updated projections indicate that even more resident students than previously projected are anticipated to attend the Wayzata schools. Current enrollment for fall 2019 demonstrates and corroborates that conclusion. So based upon the August 2nd kindergarten enrollment and elementary enrollment by site, kindergarten in certain sites are exceeding projections and the administration, your executive directors, are recommending approval of 5.0 FTE of additional staff to meet elementary class size targets and to serve Northwoods families and students. Northwoods enrollment is nearly 100 students over original projections. And I do have to tell you that we did get an updated report and the enrollment continues to grow. So with a high level of confidence, we are asking the board to approve an additional 5.0 FTEs for a total of 363,415. And we will also receive revenue of at least $363,415 from the state on the per pupil amount. So the recommended action is before you.
All right. So the recommended action is to approve the 5.0 FTE of additional staff and increase both the general fund revenue and expenditure budgets by $363,415. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Brown.
Do you have a clarification question?
Yes.
So of the five FTEs listed here, could you, this might be a Ms. Boss question, do you know where the positions are going to be? The two kindergartens, are those Northwoods kindergarten teachers?
Actually, we're looking the two kindergarten positions. One would be added to Greenwood. They've met the class size ratio. And the second one was projected for Gleason Lake. And I believe that today they've made that projection. They made their numbers. Was there another position that you were curious about?
The two special ed hotspots?
We're actually, we're seeing some caseload management increase. So we're actually looking at doing some sharing of those positions between some of our buildings. And I don't want to state specifically which buildings are going into, but it's because of all of the new enrollment that we're seeing. And of course, some of those students come to us on IEPs. And we want to make sure that our caseloads are manageable for our teachers. So that's where we're at with those.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
May I make a comment too?
Yes.
So we did talk about this at the Finance Committee meeting this morning as well. And I think one of the things that our takeaway was that because Gleason Lake is starting to see some turnover and the people who have been aging in place, there are a lot of homes in the Oakwood and in the Gleason Lake attendance areas. And we believe that those homes may start to begin turning over. So we'll see not only new growth and new construction and new homes that are being built, but we think we're approaching the time when our existing housing begins to turn over and young families begin to move into those homes as well.
I can say there was a steady stream at the bus rider at the big yellow bus on Thursday. Wow, was that fun. So, and they just were coming and coming and coming, which was great to see. Any other questions, comments? All right, there's a motion before us. It's been moved and seconded, and it's a roll call vote.
All right, thank you. Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes.
Benita Lucky.
Yes.
Chris McCullough, yes. Cheryl Polzin.
Yes.
Eric Brown.
Yes.
And Chair Johansson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Madam Chair, I may ask Stacy to further, talk further about those positions.
I did find out which positions we have the extra special ed teachers at. And so we're looking at caseload increases at Oakwood, Gleason Lake, Meadow Ridge, and Northwoods.
Thank you.
I hate not having the answer for you. So, there you go. Thank you so much. That was good clarification. Okay, Mr. Westrom.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, the last item this evening is asking the board to make a budget or a policy revision to our Policy 731. This policy, Policy 731, deals with post issuance debt compliance and basically is, allows the school district to remain in good standing with the municipal municipalities continuing disclosure cooperation initiative and the Securities and Exchange Commission. It's probably beyond the scope to go in great detail here, but I will share with you that, once again, the Finance Committee met this morning. We talked in great detail about this. And basically, what we're asking is to include a total of 16 event notices that the district will monitor in conjunction with the administration and our financial advisors. We currently have 14 and 16 will be looked upon more favorably and was recently passed on February 27th, 2019. As you know, we are asking the board to give consideration to issuing Certificates of Participation and abatement bonds. And that means we will actually be meeting with our, with the bond rating companies, probably Moody's and Standard and Poor's, and they will look highly favorable upon the addition of these two items in the policy. So with that, the recommended action is before you.
All right, thank you so much. The recommended action is to approve the revised Policy 731, the district post issuance debt compliance, and direct the Executive Director of Finance and Business to retain ELLers to ensure compliance with these additional requirements. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I guess just a quick comment, like we talked about this morning, is just my appreciation for making sure that we are completely compliant with all federal regulations. And this does help us retain our AAA bond rating by, you know, adhering to all of these. So thank you for being on top of that and making sure that we have that all taken care of.
Thank you.
I would echo that. And thanks to my colleagues on the Finance Committee, as Mr. Westrom said. And thank you, Mr. Westrom, for your extensive team, making sure that we are always our commitment to operational excellence and our commitment to our community trust and staying in good standing with the rating systems and such. So, thank you. Okay, and it's not a roll call vote. So all in favor of approving the recommended action, which is related to a revised policy of 731, the district post issuance debt compliance, and directing the Executive Director of Finance and Business to retain ELLers to help us to ensure this compliance, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Abstentions? Motion carries. Phew, that was a lot of work. And imagine if we would have read all those resolutions.
Yes.
That would have been a long night. Okay, next up are board reports. Are there any board reports that we have? I just would like to make one small note. As we've all been watching and hearing, we know that the school board election filing time is on. It closes tonight or tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
I thought so. It closes tomorrow at 4:00. I would like to welcome all candidates to this school board race. It is so exciting to see the number of people who are interested in serving our students in our community. And we really do look forward to the conversations and the relationship building and understanding that's built along the campaign. So welcome to everyone and thank you so much in advance for your commitment to wanting to serve our district for the next four years. For our community, it closes at 5:00 PM, I think, is when that filing deadline closes. And so a little less than 24 hours, all updates regarding the election and who is running and the dates of things can probably, can be found on our website. I know that there's an updated candidate list that comes out quickly. There will be some forums and things in the Sun Sailor and like Share Weekly and so in both print media, social media, as well as in-person conversation. So we invite our community members to stay up to date. Anyone with questions can certainly check the website or contact Mrs. Winter in the administration office. So, yeah, any other board report? No. Next is the audience opportunity to address the board. And I don't think we have anyone here that is interested in addressing the board. Therefore, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, the Wayzata, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Abstentions? The Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education Regular Board Meeting for Monday, August 12th, 2019 is adjourned.